We're going to get right into this today. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a student from Martin Luther King Junior Elementary who's going to lead us in the pledge. And Principal Lucero, do you want to introduce your student to us?
Yes, thank you. So we have Alonso Garcia Martinez. He is a fifth grade student here at MLK. I've had the opportunity to see him play basketball out on the playground and he has excellent sportsmanship. So very proud of him, follows the star expectations and he's looking mighty sharp. Hi Alonso.
Hi Alonso, it's nice to see you. So Mrs. Anderson is going to post the flag onto the screen. And as soon as you see the flag, you feel free to start the pledge whenever you want to, okay?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Alonso, that was very well done. We appreciate you being here today. I'm going to let the rest of the board members thank you individually. And if you, if they have questions, maybe you'd be able to answer their questions. They'll be really easy, I promise.
Okay.
Okay. Is Graciela here?
I am.
Do you have any questions for Alonso?
Sure. Hi Alonso, my name is Graciela. You did a really good job on the pledge of allegiance. Can you tell me one thing that you like about being back in the school building?
I like being math.
You like doing math?
Yes.
Cool, awesome, good job. Well, thank you for being here and good job again.
Alonso, just, I just want to thank you for being with us today and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much.
Thank you Raymond. Reverend Davis?
Hey Alonso, great job leading the pledge. And I know you love math, right? But I also hear you, you got a good little basketball skills going on. Is basketball one of your favorite sports?
Yes.
All right. Well, I look forward to seeing you more on a basketball court. Keep up the great work in school and make us proud.
Thank you Don. Norm, do you have any questions for Alonso?
Naturally, we met before we started, so I just wanted to thank you again Alonso for participating. Also wanted to let you know, when I heard your name, one of my best friends for about 45 years was named Alonso. So when I heard your name, it made me think of my friend and it gave me a warm feeling. So feel proud of your name, I like your name too. And good luck in school.
Alonso, if I remember correctly, you're in fifth grade, correct?
Yes.
Do you know where you're going to middle school?
Washington.
Do you want to share that with us?
I'm going to Washington.
You're going to go to Washington?
Washington.
Well, they have some great teachers there and a fantastic principal. So you're going to do really well. We look forward to seeing, seeing you more and hearing about you, especially on the basketball court. Thank you so much for being here with us today.
Cool.
Thank you Alonso, you represented our school well. I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Next on the, next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement. And it's my honor to be able to read that today. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the 14 Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalane, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kititas, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step toward correcting the stories and practices that cause, that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As the school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation. Next, we have the report on multilingual department update. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to lead into this for us or no?
Actually, I would love to pass this to our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Jenny Rodriguez, for the introduction. She's able?
I am. Thank you. We're really excited to bring you what is, I think, one of our first teaching and learning department updates for the year. And we have a great schedule throughout this year and next year, so that over the two-year sequence, you really will get to hear about each of our component programs in teaching and learning here in Yakima. And we thought it would be great to highlight up first our multilingual department and all of the great work that is happening there. I know that you guys already know Tali Garcia, but she's been with the district for a while and is an expert around multilingual education. So she has great updates and I know we'll be happy to answer any questions you have at the end of her presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Tali.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Good afternoon, YSD Board members and Superintendent Dr. Green. Thank you for the opportunity for me to share the work that I've been a part of this year and also the work that I'll be continuing this upcoming school year in the meeting the needs of our multilingual students. First of all, I'd like to start with the strategic plan, which states students will become bilingual, bilingual by graduation. As you are aware, this is one of our key initiatives spoken by our students, our community, and unanimously voted by the school board. It states, all students will have the opportunity to become culturally competent and academically successful and prepared for the global job market in two or more languages. Our departments focus on two components. At least 75% of PK through 5 schools will have access to two-way dual-language program. At least 10 out of 20 graduating seniors, 50%, attain the seal of bilinguism. Our multilingual department focuses all our work, all our daily work around meeting the district's strategic plan in order to attain those goals by 2026. Learning more than one language is an asset to individuals, families, and our entire community. Teachers can share the benefits of bilingualism with families and their communities, find ways to support children's home languages, and encourages families to keep their language strong. Developing the child's home language provides the foundation for reading and writing, preparing children to be bilingual. Researchers have found many benefits to our bilingual and bilingual switching between two different languages. And in this slide, it shows that we have created a YSD dual-language leadership committee, which had 36 members and we're continuing that work this year, which included parents, classroom teachers, principals, instructional facilitators, instructional specialists, principals, assistant principals, directors, and a member from OSPI. With that, we had monthly meetings. And with that, we also had a planning committee, which helped create the agenda for the monthly leadership committees. We have subcommittees. And with that meeting, we came together and we voted on how do we proceed with dual language. And so it was really nice to have a consensus in that leadership team as a group as we move forward with dual language. We also have professional development. We started our very first YSD dual-language academy, which had 70 participants. We cover dual-language foundations, Spanish language arts, social studies, English language development, STEAM, math and science, shelter instruction. And all the other things that are listed below are the conferences and PD that our teachers and staff attended. And it's exciting, going back to the dual-language academy, it was all conducted in Spanish. Next is the two-way 80-20, that's the implementation. This year, we're implementing one-way. Due to the pandemic, we didn't know how long the pandemic was going to be, but it was the committee that voted to start with one-way, moving from early exit. It just seemed to make sense to the committee to go start with one-way. Next year, we'll start two-way. Those are the four schools, Adams, Sparch, Lincoln, Garfield, and MLK started this year. And then next year, we will add three more schools. And then you can see below the other hiring impacts across our district. We are preparing principals to view this program as part of the whole system, which includes conversations and ILT and develop goals in our school improvement plans. Part of this preparedness included principal dual-language PLC and a book study to prepare principals for conversations that may occur in their building. I want to recognize Washington State Superintendent Reckdell's vision for K-12 education includes dual-language for all, two-way dual-language beginning in kindergarten and extending through 12th grade. For every student, prioritize English learners, multilingual learners, and Native American students to close opportunity gaps. All Washington schools will have access to dual-language education by 2030. I also want to recognize Deputy Superintendent Dr. Darling in providing guidance to our department and how we lead this work collaboratively and how we build transformational changes to our system itself. We have teacher leaders on special assignment who are dedicated to this work. Blanca Enrique, the bilinguism instructional specialist. Erica Rodriguez, Spanish language arts and literature instructional specialist. Aida Cantenco, STEAM dual-language specialist. The long-term success for dual-language is nearly one-half of the adults around the world speak at least two languages. In today's global society, they have many advantages. Globally, bilingual and bilingual adults have more job opportunities than monolingual adults. Bilingual and bilingual individuals have the opportunity to participate in the global community in more ways, get information from more places, and learn more about people from other cultures. All right, now we're on the next slide. Imagine Language and Literacy. To help, to help see where our multilingual students' learning gaps are and to provide individualized instruction, we're using Imagine Language and Literacy. Last year was our first year implementing at all elementary buildings and we saw great results. With all the challenges of COVID last year, we hope to at least get half of our 2,500 students using the program. Thanks to the amazing work of our many staff and especially our ELD teachers, we were able to help over 2,100 students use this resource. This program delivers explicit and targeted instruction to each student that continually adapts to the student's performance needs. Vocabulary is taught through extensive direct instruction and grammar lessons. Strategic scaffolding and support, further supports English learners' learning and reading, writing, listening, speaking. Thanks to the amazing efforts in a year where researchers expected students to show only less than a normal growth, YSD multilingual students showed 9% increase as students working on or above grade level, which is, this is a huge worth, an opportunity to celebrate. English language proficiency assessment is an online annual assessment given to all students who qualify for English language development services through the placement test. The annual assessment measures students' English language proficiency, both knowledge and skills in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Results from the test determine whether students remain eligible to continue receiving English language development services or determines certain students' language proficiency for teachers to progress, to, excuse me, to progress, monitor their academics for two years. With the data collected, these are the targets we'll be focusing on. Social-emotional support, formative assessment, scaffolding, instruction, collaboration, and co-teaching, families, and advocacy. This is in alignment with the work from the assessment department in building multi-tiered systems of support and also in alignment in supporting our building school improvement plans. We have also included the Data Literate for Multilingual Leaders series, which we have trained 180 educators, learning about how to access and use their data to make informed instructional decisions. This is our last year in assessing students on the ALPA and now we're assessing students on the WEDA, which brings us to our next slide. The WEDA consortium, it has grown from three states to 40 member states, territories, and federal agencies. The WEDA only stands for itself. It was formerly known as World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And before that, it was also known as, was named after the three states, Wisconsin, Delaware, and Arkansas. But it's just WEDA now. So don't need to memorize another acronym, just WEDA. So the WEDA screener is used to determine initial eligibility for ELD services. This is an online assessment that measures proficiency in four language domains of reading, writing, listening, speaking. This test is typically administered to potential English learners upon initial enrollment in Washington schools. The next one is the WEDA model. It's an interim assessment, measures English language for grades K through 12. WEDA model can be administered at any time during the school year, depending on the needs of the district, school, and teacher or student. The assessment indicates how the students will do on the WEDA access during the annual assessment. This is something that we're real excited about, about the interim assessment. I've been in ESL programs for a very long time and it's real exciting to see that we have something in place that we can progress, monitor students, that is an indicator to see how our students will perform on this summative assessment. And that leads to the WEDA access. So the WEDA access is a summative English language proficiency assessment taken annually by English language learners in kindergarten through grade 12 in February and March, indicating their language proficiency growth, reading, writing, listening, speaking. Now, this summer, we had offered a training on the WEDA ELD proficiency standards framework. So this will help guide teachers for curriculum instruction and assessment for multilingual learners in K through 12. There are four big ideas anchored in the standards and are woven throughout the framework. Equity of opportunity and access, integration of content and language, collaboration among stakeholders, functional approach to language development. So those are the numbers. We had over 300 staff members attend this training throughout the summer, so we're real excited about that and continuing that work. All right, it's time to celebrate again our students, right? We want to celebrate and congratulate the students that attained the seal of bilinguism. This is an award given by our school, excuse me, by our school district in recognition of students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. As this aligns to our strategic plan of valuing the importance for students to be recognized for their academic success and see the benefits of being bilingual and bilingual. In the RCW, it states, participating school districts with students eligible to receive the seal shall place a notation on the student's high school diploma and high school transcript, indicating that the student has earned the seal. We also provide students with a certificate and a medallion to wear during their graduation. Due to the response to COVID-19, seal of bilinguism moved from testing in large groups to one-on-one or small groups. And with this change, we focused on our seniors in attaining the credits for the seal. We are looking forward to going back to our usual testing protocols so we can test more students. I'd like to recognize one of our teacher leader. One of our teacher leaders is Maria Chaviseja, who helped many of our students earn the seal, working around the clock and accommodating the students' schedules. So with that, we interviewed some of our students who have earned the seal. Louise, he said, my mother, my mother, on my mother's side, excuse me, my mother's side of the family still resides in Mexico. Despite the geographical distance, we maintain a strong connection with, through social media. It would not be possible for me to have this strong of a connection without to express my thoughts and ideas confidently in Spanish. Karen said, it allows you to practice a language you may already know and test your knowledge about the language. It's a win-win because you can get to practice while you're earning credits for graduation. And Cleopatra, receiving the seal of bilinguism has changed my perception toward maintaining my home language by highlighting the importance of it. When I was taking the test, I was able to recognize how fluent, not fluent, I was in certain aspects of Korean. Although I did pass my seal of bilinguism, the experience of struggling and not knowing certain things allowed me to change my perception by creating a desire to learn and perfect Korean and more. Staff participated in virtual Spanish classes one day a week with Rosetta Stone. It is an opportunity for them to learn key phrases and basic vocabulary to use during their regular school day and to be able to communicate with families. We also offered parents who participated in a virtual English classes two days a week, so they could have the opportunity to grow in developing key phrases as well, basic vocabulary and sentence structure, and growing their bilinguism skills. A parent shared, shared with us, her name's Yostanya. She said, the English classes helped me at work. I learned vocabulary and how to form sentences in English despite my work schedule. I too am emerging bilingual as well. Juntos podemos hacer una diferencia, gracias. Do you have any questions or comments?
Any questions for Tali? Preguntas?
I do have one. I'm just trying to think about dual language and the gifted program, IB, AP or honors courses. I'm just wondering how, is there, is there going to be a connection or what is the committee's thoughts on that?
With, with the committee, we have just been focusing on the elementary, preschool, and kindergarten and rolling up to first grade. We haven't had those discussions yet. But I'm sure we will have more to come about that question.
Not a question, but a comment. Tali, I want to thank you for your work, this, the information presentation, the data included in there is really helpful for me to understand the programming and the different things that we're doing. I appreciate that we're taking kind of a multifaceted approach. We're not just teaching kids in Spanish or other languages, but we have an opportunity for staff to learn another language and for parents to learn English as well. So I think it's really great to see that approach. So thank you to you and your staff for all of your work and for your presentation today.
Thank you, Graciela. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Tali, this is Reverend Davis. I remember when we was doing the strategic plan and how you and I fought and convinced others about the importance of dual bilingual, bilingual by graduation and starting at kindergarten and seeing it rolled out like this. And my wife is one who is, was willing to volunteer this school year, but because of COVID, to be immersed in the Spanish class, because she can read it and write it. But it's the speaking and, you know, that's something that we would love to do. And to see this coming out from the meetings over at YB Tech and putting it all together, to see it rolled out in this fashion and knowing that it's going to elevate this one step at a time and it's going to get to that, to that ABIB piece. But it's a great, great job, Tali and Maria. I just love what you guys are doing and continue the great work, because this is one of my, my things that I wanted to see in the district, because the students can achieve and we can achieve greater grade success scores by doing the dual bilingual, bilingual piece. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Don. Norm, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I think everyone's pretty much covered what I have to say. Again, I'm really appreciative of the work and I firmly believe in dual language and I'm glad to see we're moving forward with it.
Thank you, Norm. Tali, I can't begin to tell you how excited I am that we are moving in this direction. It is, as you probably know, it's something that we tried a number of years ago, but the model wasn't conducive to our population. And I'm glad that it's back and that it is more, more compatible with our population and the demographics of our population. I have two questions. One, your timeline takes it out to, I think, what, when this year's current kinders will be in fourth grade. I'm assuming that it continues after that, if we're going to get to the goal of bilingual, bilingual by graduation. So we'll be rolling it up into fifth grade and then into middle school and then into high school, I'm presuming, correct?
Yes, that's the ultimate goal, is roll it up all the way up to high school.
Perfect. Okay, and the other question you might not have the answer to. I'm wondering if we keep statistics on how many students, well, we have, I know we have statistics on, sorry for the background noise. I know we have statistics on how many students are, have achieved the seal of bilinguism. But I'm wondering if, those dogs, I am so sorry. I'm wondering if we know how many languages were involved in those numbers?
I don't have that information offhand, but I know it's around about 12 languages, 10 to 12, but I have to get that to you.
That would be wonderful. I'd be, I'd be interested in knowing that. Simply because, yeah, I think, I think many people assume that because of our demographics, we're only granting seals of bilinguism in Spanish. And I think it would be interesting to the community to know that we have at least one student who got her seal in Korean. And if we know of the other languages, that would be, I'd appreciate knowing that, thank you. Okay. Jenny, do you have any closing comments?
I just would like to thank Tali for her leadership and the work and honestly, every member of the dual-language committee and Dr. Darling, who also really championed this work over the last two years and the foresight really of the board and those folks that were a part of the planning of the district strategic plan. This is the right work for our community. It's the right work in a global economy. So I'm really excited that we are on this journey and Tali and her team are being very thoughtful and intentional about rolling this out the right way, ensuring that we have staff trained, that we have the supports in place for this to be successful and sustainable in Yakima. So we have a great team and we're just excited to see how this is going to positively impact our students and their families into the future.
Thank you, Jenny. Trevor, do you have any closing comments on this subject?
I would simply add that the work that the board conducted in overseeing the strategic plan and approving the strategic plan is having a tremendous impact on our community. I think we can all see the importance of having that type of a direction that will then dictate where we head as a district and as a community. So again, as usual, I compliment the board for your drive and foresight in creating a direction for us to follow, because it certainly makes it much easier for us to deliver on what our students need and what our community has asked for.
Thank you, Trevor. Tali, you're welcome to stay if you want to. Thank you, Trevor. Talia, you're welcome to stay if you want to, but we understand if you have to leave, if there are other things that are tugging at you this time of day. But thank you so much for your presentation. It was, it was well done and very informative. Okay, moving on in our agenda, next we have reports from members of the board. Are there any board members who wish to share any reports or information with the rest of the board?
Nothing of big import. Trevor and I attended the regional meeting and that was, was fine. I don't recall there were any earth shaking things that came out of it. It was nice to see Grandview's new high school, a little bit of it. They have a beautiful new facility there and it's nice to see our neighbors progressing along and celebrating that. There was one other thing. I've gone blank on it. I'll think of it later, maybe.
Okay, well, if you think of it, we can circle back. As Don and Norm indicated, we do have the results of at least some of the WASDA election. Ron Mayberry from Kennewick is the new president-elect for WASDA. And Norm, you said that was a 69% to 31% win?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the vice, the vice president-elect isn't determined. There were four candidates and so there will be a runoff between the top two.
So I'm not sure who those top two are, but we'll be getting an email from WASDA. I think that's how that's going to work.
I believe you will because that's how I became aware of it. I received an email from WASDA.
Okay.
Oh, I remember the other thing, what I wanted to tell you was I have changed my annual conference registration to virtual instead of in-person. So I don't believe there's anybody here that's attending in person unless Don might be. Okay, but I've switched to virtual, so.
And I think we're all now virtual except for Don.
I believe so.
So I'm looking forward, not necessarily to sitting in this chair for hours on end, but they've got, they've got some good speakers. Trevor and I will be part of a workshop on Saturday. I think we're both kind of hoping that we can do that virtually, but we haven't heard back yet. If, if in fact we have to go over there, it will mean that we will, we, I, will miss all of the workshops because they're only being held on Saturday this year. And I'll have to drive over, you know, we'll have to drive, drive two and a half hours to Bellevue for an hour-long workshop and then two and a half hours back. It just seems like almost a supreme waste of our time, but if they insist, we will be doing it virtually, in person, I suppose. It's a workshop about modified calendar. And Bunker had submitted it. And then and, and then when, when it was announced that the workshops are going to be only on Saturday, now she's not going to be able to be there because she has, she'll be traveling on Saturday. So she had asked Trevor and I to be a part of that panel and there may be others on the panel. I'm just not sure yet. She's been tied up with family things these last couple of weeks and so I haven't had a chance to touch base with her, but it, our workshop is from two to three on Saturday. So, and there are other good workshops there too and they'll be, they will be doing, premiering some new onboard training, but it's only going to be, those are only going to be for in-person. They will be having the the virtual onboarding of these sessions later on this year, so, or the beginning of next year. So we can look forward to that. I'm not sure what they all are. I know that Equity is one. Because they, by, by the new, by a new state law, they've had to develop an Equity workshop for school board members, so they've been working on that, but we'll find out soon enough, I suppose. Any other reports from members of the board? Okay, Trevor, do you have reports for us?
I do. President Rice, members of the board, we have lots of good news for you. We'll start out. First of all, I'm determined to share with you the character word of the month. It so happens that it is determined. Having reached a decision firmly resolved in Spanish, decidido haber tomado una decisión firmemente resuelto, the trait is resilient learner and the característica en español aprendiz resiliente. So we're excited about that word and I think being determined in the face of everything that is going on. This is always very timely and applicable for our educators, for our students. So I'm proud to share that word with you today. We'll now move, before I share the rest of the good news, let's talk about the YSD statistics on COVID and the Yakima County statistics. So I will turn this over to our COVID response team members led by Stacy Lott.
Thank you very much Superintendent Green. Good afternoon, school board. So I'd like to premiere for you today the new Yakima School District COVID-19 dashboard, data dashboard, and it looks pretty small right here, but you do have a copy in board docs. And probably the biggest change is it outlines all the schools' positive student cases, staff cases, the number of students we have in quarantine and then the percent total of students that we have in quarantine. Right now, we have roughly 686 students in quarantine in our school district, which is about a little over 4.5%. And out of the 63 positive cases, 71% of those cases are student cases. And so this new dashboard will be updated on Wednesdays. It's going to include the most recent two weeks of data and it's now embedded on our main page as opposed to having to dig to, to find it. Next slide, please. So just to pull the right side of that dashboard in just a little bit closer, lets you know the percentage of students quarantined both at the elementary, middle and high school level for that total. And then as far as testing data for the district, we have administered 1,221 tests with 60 positives, which is roughly 5% positivity rate. And lastly, for our COVID outreach and customer service, we are messaging out, 100% of the COVID messages are now receiving same-day response and service. And at least three attempts are made to reach families who have left voicemails to or cannot leave a voicemail, again, reaching out. And from 9/27 up until last Friday, 465 messages were responded to. Of those 465, 375 callbacks were made where we actually talked to someone. And again, over with 20% left, we did a second and third call and then left a voicemail if possible. So again, getting on top of contact tracing and getting information out to our community. Any questions?
Thank you, Stacy, and thanks also to Jessica and the rest of your crew for putting together that data dashboard. I think it will be helpful for the community to have that information as we move forward. So I know it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily information that was right at the tips of your fingertips, but I appreciate the extra effort that you all went through to get that pulled together for us.
No, you're more than welcome and it's, it's much more robust than it had been before. And it has actually helped us on the backside by asking additional questions for us to do analysis around and then improve data matrix. So thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce Jewel Brumley. And Jewel is part of our COVID team, is doing her weekly Yakima County update. Jewel.
Thank you, Stacy. So our cases kind of went down a little last week. Kind of went up right at the end of the week. You know, Thursday, we had 245 cases in one day, but then 150 on Friday. I do not have Monday's numbers yet. I keep updating the health district dashboard on my other screen, but it's not ready yet. As you can see, our 14-day rate though, has dropped kind of steadily since the beginning of September when we peaked. And so that's, that's a good sign, our 14-day rate. And our seven-day rate has kind of leveled off, so our seven-day rate is not statistically different from last week yet. So we'll see what the weekend numbers come in at. Our zip code data, again, nice kind of steady progression down for most areas. Hospitalizations have gone down since we peaked at the beginning of the month at 70. We're steady right now at 36 people in the hospital. The state hospital percentages by age have come down. You don't see the trend data here, but last week I talked about the age, the age of the highest point was, you know, 30 to, or 40 to 60, and that was at 26% in the hospital. Now it's at 15.6, so that's come down quite a bit. Our school age cases from the Yakima County, we are at 25% of total cases in the, in the county are school age students and with staff also, so 153 new students and 33 staff in the county had positive COVID cases. The trend data, again, if you look at the beginning of September, we were, you know, we were low on the first of September, but by the 7th of September, we were peaking. And we have come down a little bit, except for in the K5 area. And they're not eligible to vaccinate. Vaccinations, again, creeping up. Every week, we creep up between, you know, three tenths of a percent to a full percent, so that's kind of nice to see. Are initiating the vaccine for 12 and up, if you've noticed, it's gone way up to 67.9%. We're almost at 70% that have started the vaccine sequence, so that's really good. Soon they will be fully vaccinated. They go back and get their second shot. Fully vaccinated, right now, we're only at 47.4, but that's still a gain. And then 12 and up, 59.3. The next slide, I did a comparison because it's hard to see how much we've gained since I started looking at vaccination rates. Barb, can you go to the next slide? But here, when I first started looking at vaccination rates, June 12th, which was the last day of school, we were, you know, at a much smaller percentage than we are now for ages 12 and up. So if you see, just looking at visually at the slides, there's, there's a good difference there. So we have made progress. Vaccination rates by the, by age compared, Yakima County compared to the state. Again, Yakima County only counts 12 to 17-year-olds in one group and the state breaks that up in different age groups. But we lag behind the state a little. We're trying to catch up to them. And then my forecast, I have not entered this week's data yet because I don't have it. But hopefully, we stay, we're right on track to stay about the same, which would still keep us below my prediction, which is a good thing. I'm happy about that. Anybody have any questions?
As always, Jewel, thank you so much. This is extremely helpful information for us and I, as Trevor indicated, I too appreciate the comparison slide. You know, as we, as we update these kind of like on a weekly basis, it's hard to remember back to what it was back in June. And I think, I think what's helping our numbers is certainly the numbers of students who are getting vaccinated and not necessarily the number of additional adults. But I could be wrong.
Do we have new data on the number of school district employees that have gotten vaccinated? It's kind of important as today is that essentially the deadline for them to do something about that. Do we know that the percentage has changed in school employees?
Norm, if you can give me a couple of minutes, I'll get the most recent accurate numbers for you.
Okay, that'd be great. And also another question for Jewel, the rates for children. Do you have data on the number of people that are hospitalized that happen to be children under the age of 17?
Yeah, let me pull that up real quick.
Okay. It's encouraging to see the trends are good, but when you look at the statewide trends, Yakima County is still among the worst, if not the worst, in the state, so that's a little discouraging.
Assotin is the worst. They're at like 30%, 36%.
Right, but Assotin is probably what, 25 people? I mean, Assotin is a teeny, teeny, teeny little town over in Garfield County on the border.
I think probably Assotin is equal to our student population, if not fewer.
Oh, I think it's fewer, yeah. I've actually been to Assotin, I can tell you.
Martha, if there are no other questions, I could continue with my report and then Anthony can chime in, but I don't know if there are other questions.
It doesn't appear that there are.
Yeah, I was going to say, just send me a message. Let's not hold up the meeting waiting for that data.
I'm sure we can get that before the end of the report.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, shall I proceed?
Go ahead.
All right, wonderful. So thank you. It's exciting to share some, some other good news aside from the, the numbers coming down and thank you again, Jewel and Stacy, for those reports. We do have some news about an innovations in literacy grant. We were funded through the Department of Education. It was a joint application with the ESD and this attachment is actually in your board docs. The consortium's goal, now we have not met yet, so this is hot off the press, but the consortium's goal, as you can see, the activities there in the second paragraph, is to develop and improve literacy skills for students in high-need schools. And you can see the locations there to the right in the box. The proposed activities are in book distributions, mobile libraries, out-of-school-time literacy activities, and reader-writer theaters and Read Alouds and other activities. And again, those will be determined as we come together with the consortium in the coming month or months. So I simply wanted to keep you appraised of that good news. In addition to that, I will now turn some time over to Dr. Darling to talk about our dual language and tribal language grants.
Thank you Superintendent Green. Good afternoon, board. I think this is timely that we had our Director of Multilingual Education do a presentation today because we've been awarded two grants to support our strategic plan. First off, we received $200,000 for a two-year grant for our dual language programming. So these funds will be used for professional development, resources and training and basically anything that we need for our dual language program that we use over the next two years. So it's a fantastic boost in the arm for a program that, we know that a lot of these classrooms we have, they have a lot of great resources in English, but they don't have very robust Spanish libraries and that type of thing. So these are funds we'll be able to use to support all the resources necessary to provide a very literacy-rich classroom environment for our bilingual students. The second one is we received a tribal language grant. So this is, we're done in partnership with the Yakima tribe. And we received a $60,000 two-year grant for them and it's for the Yakima Nation language of Ishiskin. And so this grant is a, this first year is going to be a planning year with the goal of offering introductory lessons at the elementary level and credit-bearing courses at the secondary level, hopefully beginning as early as spring of 2020. It'll also be used, some of these funds will be used in conjunction with, with. Uh, it'll also be used, some of these funds will be used in conjunction with the, with, um, Yakima Nation to provide a, a pro, a project manager. And this project manager will help collaborate all these efforts of, uh, providing language courses and even credit-bearing courses in the Yakima School District. And then the part of this partnership will also, um, help explore ways that we can add and honor native, uh, student traditions such as, uh, dedicated graduation ceremonies and things of that nature. So, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for dual language, sixty thousand dollars for an Ichi skin, Ichi skin tribal grant. So we're super excited about that. And I practiced saying that name a bunch of times. Elise even recorded herself and sent it to me so I could hear it over and over again. But I think I still watched it, I apologize.
Thank you, Dr. Darling. Uh, any questions from the Board?
Well, we be, you may have said this, and I was not present at the moment. Um, will we be doing, and I don't know how to say this, the Na, Yakima language courses in our schools, or no?
That's one of our, that's one of the goals in our planning is to offer, um, I, the, the language course as a credit-bearing course in our, in our high schools. And so we would probably first start with, uh, at Davis where we have a native education club. And so we would start exploring with that group. But ultimately, our goal is to expand and offer the language as a, as a, um, an elective course in, in our high schools at Yakima School District.
Do you think that at some point in the future, we might be able to celebrate a seal of biliteracy in that language as well?
That's our ultimate goal. I don't know if it's currently offered. Um, so I think, Trevor?
Yeah, we, we will eventually get there. I know that, uh, when Norm and I were at the legislative meeting this last week, uh, there were some celeb, uh, celebrations from other superintendents being shared. And, uh, Henry Strom from Grandview did share that they had had, I believe, five, uh, three to five students. Uh, I believe it was Henry. Um, if I'm mistaken, then it may have been, uh, um.
I think it was Kurt.
I was just gonna say, it probably was Mount Adams because I know they have a larger population. So there, there have been some that have achieved this, uh, this seal of biliteracy. And, uh, we're looking forward to following suit.
Thank you. Any que, any other questions for Rob or Trevor on this? Okay.
Martha, you, you asked the question and you had the answer. I, I, you kind of pitched a softball and.
I just didn't, I just wa, wanted to confirm.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I do have one other thing to add before I'll turn it back over to see if we have a response from Anthony. But we currently have a Twenty-First Century Program, and I'd like to thank Dr. Darling for his work to make this happen as well, uh, at five of our elementary schools. And we are planning to offer similar after-school programs at every elementary school as early as this November. So thank you, Dr. Darling, for your work to make that a reality. Um, Anthony, did you have any, uh, information for the Board based on that, uh, question previously?
Yes, I did. So we have just over two thousand regular employees. When adding substitute teachers and coaching staff, it is just shy of twenty-five hundred. We have, um, three hundred and ten employees who've yet to complete the process. So just right about seventeen hundred have, uh, been either vaccinated or have applied for and received, uh, e, either an exemption through medical or religious. And we have a total of four hundred and fifty-eight to go. So, uh, we're about eighty percent done. Um, and, uh, quite frankly, the numbers were substantially lower Friday. Uh, but we sent out a communication. Um, and that communication has netted quite a bit of response today. So, uh, we're, we're moving in the right direction and we're looking, we're feeling pretty good about where we're at today.
Anthony, you said four hundred and fifty-eight to go. Four hundred and fifty-eight what to go?
So, um, the, if, if we're taking into consideration the total of regular employees, coaching staff, and substitute employees, all but four hundred and fifty-eight have completed the process. So they either still need to turn in their card or they are still applying for an exemption of some sort. But e, either way, eighty percent have completed the process. So it's, we're, we're taking it a, as serious with the substitutes, uh, and coaches' staff as well because that has an impact on our children as well.
So is the eighteenth the last day that they can turn those in?
Uh, what we've actually asked for is that this Friday be the last day because we need to be able to respond to them, uh, in no less than seven days. And then, uh, in the event that the individual applied for, uh, an exemption and wasn't able to get it, then they would also have to be starting the process of either getting vaccinated or being put out because they're not allowed to work after the eighteenth. So, um, Chris has done an amazing job, um, staying on top of this. And as of Friday, everybody who had either applied for an exemption, either a medical waiver or religious waiver, had, uh, completely been up to, up to date on where they were. They either had been approved or he had contacted them to let them know what we were waiting on. So I think as of Friday, uh, we were waiting on ten doctors' notes and all but one medical exemption had been cleared. And, and the, the one was, uh, incomplete. So he had responded to them, let them know what was incomplete and what they needed to do. And the employee has yet to respond to that, uh, district response. So we feel that either that person isn't going to, uh, but everybody else, well, we, we were. Anybody else who had applied, we knew exactly where the status was, so.
Okay, thank you. And, and thanks to Chris. I know this is yeoman's work, trying to nail all this down within a short period of time. I appreciate his efforts.
When he walked in the door, I told him, this is your first and foremost priority, and he has been doing an amazing job.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions on this?
Yeah, I just, I have one more. I, I know some districts around the state with employees who have, uh, non-medical exemptions are going to do some form of mandatory testing with people that come into daily contact with children and with other staff. So I, I think that was kind of up near, are we going to have any kind of mandatory testing for people that remain unvaccinated, even though they have like a waiver? But, um, that's an accommodation a district can provide. So I was just curious where we were with that.
We are not requiring them to test, uh, on a regular basis. Uh, I'm sorry, Norm, this is probably gonna sound, uh, a bit cold. But each person, you know, is an adult, they're making their choices. And unfortunately, in the event that anybody were to, uh, catch it, I think the, the the, the screening, the things that we're doing on a regular basis are trying to keep everybody socially distanced. Everybody's wearing the mask. We're doing everything that we can to keep everybody safe. Um, I, I am not sure that logistically, we're gonna be able to do, uh, that and that, uh, what you're asking and that it's gonna have any effect, um, on anybody. So as of right now, we are not requiring that.
Trevor?
I was, I was not going to share this, but I think Anthony opened the door for this opportunity. Um, I think Stacy, uh, during her report, she gave some numbers around the, uh, uh, phone calls that were taking place over last week. And we saw numbers that were extremely high. And, uh, in, in working with, um, uh, the superintendents in the area and our, uh, Chief Medical Officer at Yakima Valley Memorial Hospital, uh, we have continually heard and learned about the, uh, crisis, uh, mode that our hospitals are in. And we are in the same type of situation, Norm. So the reason I, I say that is because, you know, Anthony, in the way that he was presenting that, I think the other component that we have to remember is that we are also in crisis mode. And we have, uh, employees throughout our district that are no longer operating, uh, in the function that, for which they were completely hired. They are doing other things on top and trying to, to backfill their other, uh, responsibilities. And, uh, to add on top of that layer, when we're talking about phone calls and we're talking about, uh, nurses and the way that they're working, uh, with our, our population to keep them safe, there's only so much that we can do and maintain the level of, of services and opportunities that we have been thus far. Uh, I shared this, and this is the piece that I wasn't going to share, but I'll share this now. Uh, I did have a conversation with the, uh, uh, the Governor's team, a couple of members from his team last week. And, uh, this was one of the items that I did share with him when I was asked about, uh, specifically what we needed, uh, what we were facing, the reality of, of, of our system at this time. And, uh, talked about how we are short numbers, that we are short subs, that we are filling positions, teachers are filling positions of other teachers during their prep periods. And, uh, it's a, it's really a crisis, uh, opportunity in front of us. And I, I, I think that we always try to put on, uh, a strong, a stiff upper lip, uh, when we're facing challenges. Uh, but we, we do have, uh, a sense to worry over what, what we're, uh, what we've really been, uh, of, uh, what's been brought to bear over the last couple of months. So, uh, it's not that we don't certainly care, it's that we do care and we're focusing those efforts on areas where we can certainly make a larger difference. Uh, but I think if we could, we definitely would be looking at that opportunity, Norm. And that would be probably what I want, I would want you to know is that, given that capacity and ability to do so, we would be doing that.
Thank you, Trevor. I know this was a topic of conversation on last week's, um, update call from WASDA. And one of the examples that was given, because I guess, I guess accommodations for those who are unvaccinated but have received exemptions, are kind of all over the board. One of the examples that was given was in Clover Park. Employees who are not vaccinated but have received exemptions have to have two negative rapid tests a week, fill out di, daily attestation forms, and wear KN ninety-five masks at all times. So, um, I, I don't know if that's the most stringent accommodation in the state, but it certainly seems like it could be. And that may be a topic that we want to pursue at some point in the future.
Martha, I think the other thing, and we don't have to do it now, but, you know, my question would be, how many of those who have exemptions have already had COVID, right? And maybe have a natural immunity? Um, so that's another variable, I think, that we can, that's probably out there. Again, we don't need to discuss it, but that's another, something else that could be going on as well.
Yeah, it's entirely possible that that, this will be a, a topic for a future point. Okay, if there are no more questions on this, Trevor, does that complete your superintendent's report?
It does, thank you, Martha.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda are the proposals for General Assembly. In, under public comment, uh, in board docs for this agenda item is, um, the web address for the Google Sheet that you all have had for a week or ten days now. And, um, I don't know if it's, I don't, I don't know if you all have had a chance to fill in, um, your column on that sheet as to whether you support or don't support a position or if you have questions about a position. But now would be the time to have that discussion.
Martha, I have not had a chance to, to review that yet. So I'll be intentional about doing that in the next cou, couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Martha, I haven't filled in the sheet, but I have gone through all the positions again. And were we going to, as a Board, sort of prioritize around fifteen? Or are we just gonna make a statement, you know, I, I can't think of a position that I'm not in favor of, but there are certainly, in terms of what was recommended by the legislative committees and the resolutions committees. But, um, uh, were we still gonna prioritize certain things that we wanted to be emphasized? Or, um, are we just gonna fill out the database and say I'm for it or against it or whatever?
We'll have an opportunity to do that aft, following, um, General Assembly. There will, there will be, I think, a one-week period, and we, I think, do have a meeting that Monday.
Okay.
Um, so we could put that on the agenda for Monday to prioritize what our top fifteen are. Um, and that is submitted electronically to WASDA.
Okay.
So, well, I'll, I'll be getting the link for that submittal. And we'll just hold off until after that Monday meeting.
Okay, I, I started that process, so I'm a little ahead of the game then.
Okay.
Which is new for me. But anyway, the other ques, the other thing, just to let everyone know, is that the, there have, there has been, uh, some editing of the handbook, the General Assembly handbook, and it came out just this afternoon, just before this meeting. So there is an updated, uh, General Assembly, there's a few changes, they're not major changes, but there are a few changes in the handbook. So you'll wanna download the newest one and take a look. It's not, they're not major, but, um, just so you're aware.
Thank you, Norm.
I, I went through it, uh, I seen some of those proposals could be combined, but I agree with all of them. I just hadn't had time to say yes to the ones I read.
Right, in fact, that's one of the things they did in the handbook.
Excuse me, can I finish?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
No, I'm not, I'm still talking.
Okay.
Thank you. And it's, it's, we can condense some and combine them, but I agree with all, of fifty-eight of them, cuz it's needed. And I think we can, uh, when, when we get the okay from the next meeting to prioritize those, the, the top fifteen that we, we would like to see, uh, pushed more, at, more hard than the rest. Now, you can have the floor now.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I just, when I heard you mention talking about combining some things, that's one of the things that they've done in the new update. For example, the ones on, the one from Resolutions Committee where they had all those standards were listed item by item as resolutions. The, that has been taken out, and all those standards are, they exist elsewhere in, in the organizational records. So they're not itemizing standards as part of resolutions. So that was several different items in the resolutions, recommendations, those have been combined into one. So that's one of the changes they made. So we'll, we'll talk more about that later. We don't need to take a lot of time now, but that's one of the things that was done.
I do know that Raymond mentioned that at our last, at our last meeting, I think. There are several legislative proposals that are similar, but are not exactly the same. And so one process that the Legislative Committee has is, is, um, to look at those after they've been adopted by the body for consolidation, um, for next year. And so some of those that, some of those that are in there that are somewhat similar that were submitted through the legislative process may come back and look slightly different next time. Raymond, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, I do. There's a few that I would indicate no.
Okay.
Um, number forty-two, gun violence prevention. I have a note, and I gotta go back and look at that. District staff should be able to decide on what additional staff they need. So I, I'm always for, you know, local control. And once we take away power from the Board, the district, I, I would oppose anything that does that. So, and that number forty-two, gun violence prevention, would do that, would leave it up to the, the local Board to determine what staff we want to. Um, so number eighty, again, it's like, I think it's a duplicate of number forty-two, twenty-one, and fifteen. And then, uh, number ten under C, the Equity-Based Education. I know I brought this up last time. Uh, the, the proposal is that there be a committee to analyze all of the, I think, education bills, policies that are coming out of Olympia to be, um, based on an equity. policies that are coming out of Olympia, to be based on an equity type of evaluation. And, let's see, number 80, I don't know if I mentioned this, but that one also takes away power from local control from the board. So if a local community believes that certain individuals should carry firearms, I think that's up to the local committee, or, excuse me, community and the local board to determine that. And to take away those rights, I wouldn't be in support of. When it comes to unemployment placement benefits and bargaining, there's a number there, 72 all the way down to 98 that I would oppose. Because we do a lot of that already in the school district. And some of those have to do with seniority. I think seniority counts as a lot. If you have to change that, that's going to create some problems with our unions. And so I think that's something that's earned. Let's see. Yeah, changing ethics, number 98, changing ethics statute to address hiring decisions. I think if there's a need, I'm not sure if the Yakima School District, if there's a need for that. And so I would say no. And then in terms of long-range planning facilities, I really don't have a lot of information. I have a lot of question marks there. I probably need to do a little bit more research. And same for the local funding. In terms of levy authority, local effort assistance, I've just, I got to do some more research. I just wasn't clear on what the proposals entailed. And then the charter schools. So I would oppose taking away power from charter schools and putting those boards, or having the responsibility of overseeing charter schools to local boards. I think charter schools are a different type of a board, and more, lots of, you know, more community involvement, parents and so forth. And those have specific purposes that they're developed for. And so I would oppose number 98, and there's 298, there's 390, well, let's see. The charter school under local elected boards, I would say no to that one. And the community succession from school districts, that also includes charters. That's involving charter schools. I think I got them all. And I got to do more research on exempting the fund balance. I'm not sure what that exactly entails. So I have a number of question marks. And number 72 on the last page has Washington State voting rights. And I'm not trying to remember, so. And I can't remember, I don't know if you remember what that one shows, but my note says the local board should be able to develop the structure of voting subdivisions. And so I think the state is wanting to determine that for each district, right? And I know as a board, we voted, or we had discussions about the board moving to those subdivisions for voting areas or districts. And there wasn't an interest, so I'm surprised that board members are actually supporting that. Does that mean that we are in, have an interest or in favor of going to districts? Moving to that, as the City Council did, and the Yakima County Commissioners?
What number is that, Raymond?
That is on the last page, number 72, right, almost in the middle of the page. So it's Washington State voting rights.
That's the one I said no to.
So.
I'm trying to get there.
So while you're looking, Martha, the runoff for vice president is Jim from Squim, Sandy Hayes from North Shore, vice president, yeah.
Sandy is the current chair of the Ledge Committee. I'm not finding that right off the top here, Raymond. Sorry.
That's okay. But from my notes, that's what I'm saying, is that the state will determine the subdivisions for, in other words, it would go to districts, just like the City Council, Yakima County Commissioners.
Yeah, that's, currently, that's something that, unless there's a lawsuit involved, that a local entity can make that decision. So I didn't, I couldn't write fast enough. Would you mind going in and completing your column on this worksheet?
Sure, I can do that.
And then we can, if you can get that done and indicate those that you've got questions about, just with the word "question", I can do a little homework and kind of remind my brain, my one remaining brain cell, what that position was about, and we could talk about it next week. I did want to make you all aware of a position that, for which I have submitted an amendment, and plan, even if the amendment is approved, plan not to support. It is position number 57, entitled "Attract, Recruit, and Retain Diverse School Board Directors." The particular proposal as it stands now has a whole laundry list of things that they're asking the legislature to codify to force districts to do, all of which can be done now if a district wanted to do it. And it surprised me when I saw that whole laundry list of things, that an organization which continually says, "We want local control, stay out of our business as much as you can, thank you very much," would then turn around and go to the legislature and say, "Oh, but we want you to tell us to do these things", when we can already do all of them. The one amendment that I submitted is, I don't know if I can even see this. I don't know if I can find it. There's an element in here that would allow school board, someone running for the school board, not to be a citizen. So it would allow non-citizens to run for school board positions. I have submitted an amendment to strip that particular provision out for any number of reasons, to include why would you only do that for school board members? And not weed-controlled district board members, or any other board member for that matter, or any other elected position in the state. I personally think that that sends a bad message to our kids when we tell them that we have a constitution and we're bound by the constitution. In addition to that, we take an oath as school directors to support the constitution. This, I think, would require a constitutional amendment to make that change. But there, I just, I just think it's a poorly written proposal.
Well, yeah, besides you have to be, you have to be a citizen to be a registered voter, and by law, only school board members have to be registered voters. So you would have to change total election law in order to make that a reality. As a resident of a community, that is not a citizen cannot be a registered voter. So that's already precluded in the law for being a registered voter.
Yeah, I think there's a lot wrong with this particular proposal, but it was a consortium of Puget Sound school districts that came, brought it together. I think it was sort of like putting together a camel by committee myself, but. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. We can talk more about this next week if you'd like. And if you could complete the Google Sheet so that we all have something to work from and look at next week, that would be great.
Martha, just one additional note, because I was looking at local funding. I'm having trouble with the approach that we're asking for money from the federal government, increases there, state, and just a lot of money we're asking for. But then we're also looking at continuing, or if not continuing, increasing local funding as well. So I'm having trouble with that. I could see if the federal and state funding was decreased, then we can increase the local taxes and so forth. So, but to increase both at the same time is something I'm having some difficulty with. I don't know what the average number of dollars that the school district receives currently from per student, but I'm sure it's increased over the last two years significantly. So I'm just having trouble, you know, we just want to, I just want to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars and our local funding. And our community has done a great job in supporting our schools. And, you know, we don't, I personally want to make sure that we're not taking advantage of any situations and protecting our local funding sources. So just want to make that statement. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. One thing I do know, and I think certainly Becky or Trevor could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm right in saying that over the last few years, there have been a lot of strings attached to any additional funding that we've received from either the state or the federal government. And those strings limit what we can spend that money for. In addition to that, they've also put strings on local levy money. And levy dollars now can only be used for enrichment, and not for some of the things that we were spending levy dollars, we have spent levy dollars for in the past. So there is that. I mean, if we're getting more money, it's coming with strings that preclude us from using it the way that we need to have it used. So anyway, we can have that discussion next week. If you all would please go through the Google Sheet and fill it out. That will help me in our discussion next Monday.
Martha, do you know if the district has turned away federal dollars or state dollars because of those strings? I'm just curious on that.
I'm not going to ask that. I don't believe we have. Trevor would know, or certainly Becky would know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't turn those down, but there are times where the district has had to return unspent funds. So we do everything that we can to keep that from happening. And I don't believe that that is, I'd have to check to see if that has happened during my tenure. But that's something we work, especially, I know that Rob and Becky worked a lot over the last two years to make sure that that wasn't happening.
Thank you.
Because isn't it the federal, is it both state and federal, or is it only federal? That if it's not, you get the money upfront, if it's not spent by the end of the year, you have to turn it back? That was a question.
Would you like me to answer that, Trevor?
Yes, Becky, please.
Thank you. It's just the state dollars, Martha.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay. Well, let's move on then. And the next item on our agenda is D1, the 2021-2022 report for, monitoring report for 1,000.2.5 Asset Protection. Becky?
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board. So I bring forward the Executive Limitations Monitoring Report for Asset Protection Policy 1,000.2.5. Would you like me to summarize, or would you like me to read through all nine items within the policy?
I think if you just summarize it, we've had an opportunity to read the reports. So if you could just give us a summary, that would be great.
Great, yeah. So let me read the policy statement. The superintendent will not cause or allow district assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained, or unnecessarily risked. And I interpret this to mean the reasonable systems in place to adequately safeguard public assets. The, we are in compliance with all nine items. Item one is, would be regarding liability losses to board members, staff, and the organization itself. And I just want to reassure you that we have adequate coverage in our insurance policy, and we have paid the premium for 2021-22. That is an attachment in your packet as proof of us paying that insurance premium. Okay, and then item number two is allowing unbonded personnel access to material amounts of funds. I can reassure you that all of us are bonded that have access to those funds. So, and that is covered under our 21-22 insurance policy. Number three is subject plant and equipment to improper wear and tear or insufficient maintenance. We have ensured that we have put adequate annual budget in for our maintenance and operations budget for the 2021-22 school year. That is also attached for your review. If you look at the Program 97 report in there, Activity 63 and 64 displays the maintenance and operation budgets for the 21-22 year. Also, for more details, the Maintenance Work Order System can summarize repair and maintenance costs by various categories, should you need that information. Item four, unnecessarily expose the organization, its board or staff to claims of liability. The evidence of compliance, the superintendent has not engaged in any unnecessary conduct or course of action which exposed the district, the board, or staff to potential liability. Any and all of those claims are flowing through our insurance, and they have been, or anything that's been arisen due to a claim is being processed. So, and then we have also, again, paid for our premium for the 21-22 school year. Item five is failing to make background inquiries and checks prior to hiring any paid personnel or retaining volunteers who have unsupervised contact with students. In the evidence of compliance, there are five bullets there of what the district reviews in order for staff to come on to our premises and begin working. So I can affirm that as of September 2021, that all of the paid employees are free of criminal activity that would disqualify them from employment in the district. Item six, fail to protect intellectual property, information, and files from loss or significant damage. On the next page is a table provided for your information. These are all of our critical information systems. Who owns the data, where the data resides, and whether we're responsible for the backup, or who is responsible. So if there is an NA in the YSD server column, the company is agreeing to back up the dating and keep that intact for Yakima School District. and fill, and keep that intact for Yakima School District. So number seven, fail to properly preserve and dispose of statutorily required records related to affairs or business of the district. We have a very robust archiving system within the district, monitored for financial records from our department and then also on the student side, monitored by special ed and/or student family services. Every year, the archiving process is done. Records are destroyed when, per that statute that governs archiving for school districts. Number eight is comprise the independence of the board's audit, excuse me, compromise, the independence of the board's audit or other external monitoring or advice. I can attest that the district has not engaged the state auditor's office or any other external monitoring agency for purposes other than those defined by applicable state and federal laws and regulations. And then item nine, through serious misconduct, endanger the district's public image, credibility or its ability to accomplish ends and outcomes. And in the evidence of compliance, under A, the Yakima School District uses a tiered model for learning, provided students with a robust classroom instruction and intentional targeted opportunities for accelerated learning. Item B, we have sound resource management. It's reflected in the, the state auditor's report that we get each year, indicating that the district operations complied in all material respects with applicable state laws, regulations and its own policies and provided adequate controls over the safeguarding of public resources. And then C, appropriate staff conduct is insured through supervision, mentorship, daily support, consultation with legal, financial and other expert advisors and corrective action is taken as necessary. All known relevant concerns are being addressed by administration. And I have no requested changes to the policy. So I will ask if you have any questions.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions from board members?
Yes, I just have a question on, on, let's see, page seven, the expenditure report number, this is the first line, 11, Board of Directors. I was just curious what, what that means, because the, the total budget is 490, 957. And, and you can see all the expenditures there and a purchase services 445,300. I was just wondering what, what that, what that is, if anybody can give me some.
All right, Raymond, oh, you're, you're looking at the, you're looking at the, this report, 90, that's up on the screen?
Yeah, line 11 there, at the top.
That's the, that's the Board of Directors annual budget for 2021, 22.
So Raymond, are you asking what the purchase services are?
Yeah, we can explain the numbers there, because it looks like our budget is 490 and some change. And our, under line seven or column seven, it was expenditure of 445,300. So I'm just wondering what, what those numbers mean.
So purchase services under the board's budget has to do with any outside legal services, any, any outside services that you might contract with. It also, object seven is also registrations for conferences.
So we spent 445,000 on legal fees and conferences, I guess.
No.
This is my question.
Oh, sorry. No.
Okay, sorry.
The actual budget for 21, 22.
Yeah, so, so Raymond, this is the, this is the budget in case we do have to spend for legal services. It is embedded in that Board of Directors budget. So it's not that we spend that much on purchase services. It's that we have that accounted for in the Board of Directors budget in case there is some anomaly that does occur that would require such an expenditure.
Okay, and I think I'm misunderstanding this report. This is just the budget. It doesn't list expenditures, right?
It does not.
Okay, that clarifies a lot.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you.
And Raymond, I did present the budget to the board, at the board retreat for the board's budget. I'm happy to send that your way unless Martha, maybe she shared it with you already.
No, I haven't seen that. I would appreciate if you sent that to me. I did miss the retreat, so, yeah, and that's, it would just help fill some of those gaps in my, in my knowledge base. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Additional questions?
Anything else from board members? Okay, Barb, one, thank you, Becky. As always, excellent report. Barb, when will we, when will we see this for the Survey Monkey and when will you need it back?
This one will go on to, you'll see it tomorrow and we'll, we need it back on the 15th. So I can put it on the 19th or actual, do we, I don't think you want it on the business calendar agenda. I think we want it on the October 25th one, right?
God, it is October, isn't it?
I know. It's going by so quickly. So we'll put it on the agenda for the October 25th.
Okay.
So by the 15th.
That sounds good. All right, next item on the agenda is monitoring report for 2 point, 1,000.2.8 Compensation and Benefits. Anthony?
Thank you. It's a short policy, so I'm just going to read it. I think it'll be simpler.
Okay.
The superintendent will not jeopardize the fiscal integrity or the public image of the district with respect to employment, compensation and benefits to employees, consultants, contract workers and volunteer. Furthermore, the superintendent will not change the superintendent's own compensation and benefits. Our district is in compliance. Interpretation, with respect to not jeopardizing the fiscal integrity of the Yakima School District in regards to employment, compensation and benefits, I interpret this to mean that the district will not exceed its financial resources with respect to compensation of employees, consultants or contractors. I further interpret this to mean that the district will remain fiscal, maintain fiscal controls for compensation and benefits consistent with all statutory and regulatory requirements, as well as best practices for school districts. With respect to not jeopardizing the public image of the Yakima School District in regards to employment, consultants, contract workers and volunteers, I interpret this to mean that the district's procedures will ensure that no person with a disqualifying criminal conviction or other disqualifying event will be employed, allowed to work for the district as a consultant or contract worker or serve as a volunteer. I further interpret this to mean the district complies with all statutory and regulatory requirements related to hiring, including issuing sexual misconduct materials, inquiries and ensuring that fingerprint background screenings are complete. With respect to the statement that the superintendent will not change the superintendent's own compensation and benefits, I interpret this phrase to have its plain meaning. The evidence of compliance. I certify that the district is not exceeding its financial resources with respect to the compensation of its employees, consultants or contractors. But in regard to the amount of employees, services and overall spending for the 2021, 2022 school year, the COVID-19 pandemic has drastically altered the way services are being rendered. The superintendent has focused his attention on bringing our district back from an out of balance budget to one that is balanced and responsible to the students and the community we serve. The superintendent, along with his leadership team, has implemented changes to budget process, increasing its transparency, which builds and maintains the public's trust. With many changes taking place over the last year, the Yakima School District is positioning itself to be fiscally sound and transparent. The fiscally sound budget was approved in July of 2021. I also certify that the district is maintaining controls for compensation and benefits that are consistent with statutory and regulatory requirements. I further certify that the district completes appropriate background inquiries and checks prior to employing any paid personnel, including substitutes, coaches and assistant coaches. These include a review of application materials, interviews, reference checks, Washington State sexual misconduct forms and Washington State Patrol and FBI fingerprinting. Operational procedures 5630 and 5630 point X E provides a clear direction for the use of volunteers. Volunteers complete an application process that includes a background check conducted by the Washington State Patrol. The superintendent's compensation and benefits are set by the school board and there are safeguards in place to ensure that no individual employee could unilaterally change his or her compensation or benefits. I have no more recommend, I have no recommendations for policy changes. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Anthony. Any questions for board members? Okay, hearing none. Barb will submit this one to the Survey Monkey and we'll get it back to her by the 15th. So that we can, you know, review the final thing on the 25th. For those of you who may not be monitoring the chat box, Jenny included information in there about the, the, in answer to the question about what languages were, were used in earning the seal of biliteracy. And just for the purposes of the recording, because I don't know that the chat messages are recorded. Jenny, could you run through that really quickly before we move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah, happy to do that, for President Rice. So we just wanted to follow up on that question we had earlier around the seal of biliteracy and ensure that our community is aware that it's available in other languages besides Spanish. Of course, predominantly, our students earn it in Spanish. But over the last three years, we have been tracking which languages students have earned it in. So last school year in the 2020, 2021 school year, which are the numbers that Tali Garcia shared with us earlier in the meeting, we had students that earned the seal of biliteracy, of course, in Spanish and also in Arabic, French, Italian, Japanese, Korean and Portuguese. The year prior, we had students who earned it in Spanish, Italian, French, German, Japanese and Portuguese. And in the 2018, 2019 school year, we had students who earned it in Spanish, Arabic, Mandarin, simple as well as Mandarin traditional and Korean. And I thought it might be of interest to the board and potentially the community as well around what languages are supported with that assessment. So we do utilize an assessment that's used across our state and elsewhere, which is part of qualifying students to earn that seal of biliteracy. They have to score a particular level. That's how they earn their credits and earn that seal. It is available in additional languages besides the ones that I have mentioned above. So I was just going to share that as well. So it is available in Arabic, French, German, Hebrew, Hindi, Italian, Japanese, Korean, Mandarin, again, both simplified and traditional, Polish, Portuguese, specifically Brazilian Portuguese, Russian and Spanish. And I know that the, the folks that establish that assessment, you know, are always looking at, could we offer this in additional languages? But those are the ones that are currently supported.
Thank you, Jenny. It looks like we may have to work with OSPI to get a stamp done for the Yakima native language. Because I don't see that listed here anywhere. So I'm not sure what, I just, I guess I just, I need to know more. I don't know how we, how there are students in the lower valley who may have qualified for the seal of biliteracy if that language isn't listed here. So it's just.
I'm going to have other avenues, I think, President Rice, to, to establish how students could earn. So that's certainly something we can work with our state partners around what are some other avenues.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that and thank you for sharing that out loud so that those who are listening in or watch this recorded meeting will have that information as well. Next item on our agenda is the review of Board Policy 1,000.3.1 Governing Style. Do I have a board member who would volunteer to review that with us?
Sure.
Thank you, Garcia.
Governing style, this policy outlines how we govern ourselves and provide some outlines as to how we, we discuss things and how we make decisions. Governing style, the Board of Directors will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than, than in internal preoccupation, encouragement of diversity in viewpoints, strategic leadership more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and superintendent roles, compliance with all appropriate and applicable district policies and procedures, collective rather than individual decisions, future rather than past or present and proactivity rather than reactivity. Accordingly, the board will cultivate a sense of group responsibility. The board, not the staff, will be responsible for excellence in governing. The board will be the initiator of policy, not merely a reactor to staff initiatives. The board will not use the expertise of individual members who substitute for the judgment of the board, although the expertise of individual members may be used to enhance the understanding of the board as a body. The board uses, uses an agreed upon policy governance model as a model under which it conducts its governance responsibilities. The board will direct, control and inspire the district through the careful establishment of broad written policies reflecting the board's values and perspectives. The board's major policy focus will be on the intended long-term impacts outside of the staff organization, not on the administrative or programmatic means of attaining those effects or ends goals. The board will enforce upon itself whatever discipline is needed to govern with excellence. Discipline will apply to matters such as attendance, preparation for meetings, policymaking principles, respective roles, ensuring the continuance of governance capability and compliance with board protocols. Although the board can change its governance process policies at any time, it will observe those currently enforced scrupulously. To ensure that all board meetings are conducted with maximum effectiveness and efficiency, members will do their homework and ask questions, listen with an open mind, avoid surprises, put the team and team goals first, follow board protocols, display good manners, support the majority, do not make snap decisions, do not take action on non-agenda items brought to the microphone or meeting without the superintendent's recommendation or study. Discuss the issues, do not engage in side conversations, do not play to the audience or monopolize the discussion. Support the president's efforts to facilitate an orderly meeting, value equal participation of all members and the perspectives they represent. Continual board development will include orientation of new board members in the board's governance process and periodic board discussions of process improvement. This will, the board will allow no officer, individual or committee of the board to hinder or be an excuse for not fulfilling group obligations. Monitoring executive limitations will be included on the agenda for purpose of monitoring organizational compliance. As a rule, members will direct any questions or concerns to the superintendent prior to official public presentation, see Policies 1,000.2. Throughout the year, the board will attend to consent agenda items as expeditiously as possible. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by an individual board member for discussion or action. Any board member may request an evaluation of the board's process and performance of a meeting. More thorough self-monitoring of board performance will be scheduled and conducted according to the board's annual calendar. Self-monitoring will include comparison of board activity and discipline to policies in the governance process and board superintendent linkage categories. The board by majority vote may revise or amend its policies at any time. However, as a customary practice, a proposed policy revision will be discussed at one session of the board prior to its being approved at a subsequent board meeting. And finally, the board will observe the confidentiality of closed or executive sessions. Discussions held in closed or executive sessions are not to be discussed with anyone else other than board members, superintendent and legal counsel.
Thank you, Garcia. Are there any questions or comments from board members about this policy?
Yeah, I have some thoughts here. It's a question for the board. Given that we spent a lot of time and effort on equity, I, I didn't see, or I didn't hear the word equity in this policy. Is that something that we should consider? Maybe that first part is we'll govern with an equity lens or with a focus on student equity or we'll champion student equity. I mean, I'm not sure how, how that would go, but I'm just kind of feeling that equity is missing. I mean, I'm not sure how how that would go, but I'm just kind of feeling that equity is missing from this policy.
I think that's a good question for us to consider. Thoughts from other board members on this?
I agree with Raymond that we should look at that piece, the equity piece into this, and see how we can implement it.
I I would also agree. It seems like it would fit well in that initial part of the policy as a um, maybe new letter I.
I agree with that also. I think it would be very easy to just add another line to that opening section that makes an equity statement.
Good catch, Raymond.
We spent, we spent a lot of time on equity, though.
Those who, those who catch get to edit too, you know that, right?
We'll, we'll just look at the, what was that, our equity equity policy? We could just grab something from there. I'm sure there's some great statements that we can just copy and paste.
Would you like to take a stab at at doing some editing on this one?
Sure. I guess I win the, as you indicated, I win the prize, so.
You do.
Well, I was voluntold, or won, one of those.
Barb, could you send Raymond a Word version of this document so that he can um, edit it, please?
Yes, I will.
Are we gonna, we gonna put it as A and just drop him down, one? And tell me if I.
We could, we could do either, we could do either way. We could, we could do either way. Um, I think what I, what I suggest is that we let Raymond do an edit to this and and bring it back to us maybe next Monday, and um, we can react to the edit. That be okay?
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Okay. All right, so Barb, we'll need to have this as a discussion for next Monday as well.
I'll add it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and let's um, let's hold off on sending that out in the Survey Monkey until after we've seen the edits. And then we can um, do the, do the survey, we still have time. Um, we can, we can do the survey after we've seen the edited document and react that way, okay?
Sounds good.
Are there objections from board members to doing that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, um, that's the last agenda item. Mr. Superintendent, I understand we have a need for executive session?
We do.
For how long?
I would recommend 10 minutes.
And for the purpose of?
Potential litigation with legal counsel.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to move to executive session for 10 minutes for the purpose of um, potential litigation with legal counsel.
So move.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Don. Is there? Barb, could you take the role, please?
Yes, Reverend, Reverend Donald Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Garcia Olivia Nueva.
Aye.
And President Rice.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Um, Barb, I don't see, and maybe I'm just not looking in the right place. I don't see the uh, the link for moving.
I, I set up a breakout room. So we're gonna try it that way.
Okay, so you all should have a join a breakout room box, jump up on your computer. We won't have to log out of this session, we'll just jump to the breakout room, and then we'll come back. Okay? See you over there. Okay. Do we have anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we will see you all next Monday, 3:30. Have a great week. Bye, guys.
Bye, everybody.